Members of the Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Arvinides. Saw him, but he felt, okay, trustee Berger.
Here.
Trustee Clark. Trustee Cortez Vasquez. Trustee Ferrer.
Here.
Trustee Kim.
Present.
Trustee Lenares Garcia.
Present.
Trustee Mojica. Trustee Oberfell. Let Brian in, so there he is, he's muted, okay. Trustee, great, trustee Palacio.
Present.
Great, trustee O'Donnell Tormi.
Present.
Trustee Sunshine. Okay, trustee Vivalo. Great, I got you. Trustee Wilkin is absent and excused. Trustee Verzani.
Present.
Great, trustee Dumboya.
Present.
Terrific. Bill, you, um, you have a quorum.
Okay, this public meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Gail?
So pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the Open Meetings Law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. As a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Happy to be present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derrick Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Wendy Hensel.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Presenting.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement, and Special Counsel Glenda Grace.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Christina Chiappa.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pamela Silverblatt.
Present.
The interim Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Anne Roast. Did not see, hi. Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Maite Unco.
Present.
Vice Chancellor of Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Vice Chancellor of Facilities and Construction Management Mohammed Atallah.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Advancement James Gaio.
Present.
I'm about to just let Lorraine in, somebody got it, okay. Um, and interim Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Rene Sarmiento. Okay, no, and then Lorraine just joined us, so I will mark her present, and I see Ken Sunshine has joined us as well, so I will mark both present.
And I, I saw Myra and definitely, and.
Definitely Myra, yeah.
And trustee Arvinides also.
Got it, great, thanks, Bill.
All right, in accordance with the directives of city, state, and federal officials to mitigate COVID-19, the CUNY Board of Trustees did not convene its June 21st, 2022 Bronx Borough hearing and public hearing. Instead, the Office of the Secretary accepted written testimony, statements in video from concerned individuals via email at hearings@cuny.edu. Twelve written and four video testimonies were submitted. The written testimonies are attached and the video can be viewed at this link. Youtube or youtube.be/CO2, a long thing. Gail, get in front of everybody. Students from Bronx Community College praised degrees at the college, including cybersecurity and chemistry. One student shared her positive experience in the Get Sighted program, which provides mental health resources to students and also promotes mental health careers. The students attributed their success in achieving their associate's degree to the ASAP program, their fellow classmates, and professors at Bronx Community College. Professors from multiple CUNY colleges expressed concerns about CUNY's proposed budget, which they think allocates a disproportionate amount of funding for lecture hires over professional staff hires. Swipe Out Hunger, a national nonprofit committed to ending college student hunger, working at all CUNY colleges, requested support in the budget for the Hunger Free Campus Program. This initiative would provide essential funding to CUNY institutions to grow the capacity and impact of anti-hunger and basic needs programs on the campuses. The spring has been an incredibly busy time for the trustees with the conclusion of three searches. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for their tireless dedication to finding talented leaders for our schools, and we will see some of the results of that in just a few minutes. And I know I speak for all of my colleagues when I say that we were delighted to participate in commencement season in person. It was truly inspiring to have this important milestone with so many of our CUNY graduates moving forward. We expect great things from all of them and all of you, and we'll be rooting for your successes. I have no doubt that each of you has the talent and the passion to change our city, our state, and the, our country and the world. After all, you're CUNY graduates. So congratulations to all of our CUNY students, our CUNY graduates. Move forward, CUNY is always, and our graduates have always changed the world, and have definitely made New York City and New York State much better places to live. So again, congratulations to all of them. Chancellor, I'm now going to call on Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for comments.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, and trustees, and presidents and vice chancellors, and keeping up with the spirit that our chair set up in talking about commencement season and the work that we do. Allow me to start by sharing a student story that touched my heart and speaks to why we're doing the work that we do. Tom Reinhold completed a forty-year journey this month when he earned a bachelor's degree in computer science from Hunter College after first transferring to the college in 1982. Even as he performed well in the coursework for his major, he faced academic challenges in other areas, which made sense later on when he learned that he has ADHD, anxiety, and a reading disability. He launched a career in computer science without graduating, but he came back to CUNY to finally earn the degree that he would now need to pursue his new passion, which is teaching. We let him pick up right where he had left in the 1980s. Tom was worried about returning to college, knowing that most students would be decades younger, but he took the opportunity to connect with classmates through Facebook. As they faced the pandemic together, he made many friends with his stories and wise words of encouragement. Degree now in hand, he will begin teaching in the Bronx as a New York City teaching fellow. Tom was one of more than fifty-five thousand CUNY students who received a CUNY diploma this spring, and his college experience was emblematic of so many stories of perseverance, resilience, and a refusal to say no that we celebrated during the commencement season. I had the great pleasure to join our graduates at eight in-person ceremonies, our first since 2019. They wrapped up last Tuesday with LaGuardia Community Colleges graduation at Queens College, where we were joined by Governor Kathy Hochul. Major Eric Adams also joined us for ceremonies at four of our colleges, including Queensborough Community College, where he began his collegiate studies. We thank the governor, the mayor, and the many borough, city, state, and federal lawmakers and leaders who came to congratulate, congratulate, and celebrate with our graduates. As we are in a season of celebration, we have a lot of great news that I would like to share with you, with you all, starting with the city budget for the next fiscal year, which restores more than sixty-seven million of pandemic-related reductions, and with fund programs like ACE, the Bachelor's Degree Program of CUNY's ASAP, along with the Brooklyn Recovery Corps at Mega Rivers College, and support for childcare, food insecurity research, and other key priorities. As part of the budget, we received 4.4 million to pilot CUNY Reconnect, a new initiative that is a priority of City Council Speaker Adrian Adams, and aims to re-enroll ten thousand students. As part of this endeavor, we will introduce CUNY Navigators, individuals who will provide one-stop application and financial assistance and will be located in every borough. The initiative will focus on removing barriers for adult learners who want to come back and finish their degree or want to change careers by supporting financial aid scholarships, offering credit for prior learning, online education programs, and pre-enrollment counseling. The first phase of CUNY Reconnect is getting underway immediately this summer, and René Sarmiento, our interim Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management, who is going full steam ahead in a new role, is taking the lead in planning this initiative out. The budget also includes 4.8 million to fund industry engagement specialists and advisors who can support students with both their academics and their career prospects as part of our workforce training initiatives. An additional 8.2 million will support the CUNY Career Launch, where more than two thousand of our students will have paid internships with nearly four hundred local businesses, organizations, and government agencies that directly support fellow New Yorkers and at no cost to the employers. We received almost eleven thousand applications for those two thousand career launch sites, and the students who are enrolled will begin their internships on July 5th. We thank Associate Provost Lauren Anderson for leadership on our industry and career work. I'd like to share final numbers with you on the federal stimulus dollars for, for student emergency grants. One of the many steps CUNY took during the pandemic to help our students maintain the academic momentum has been to ensure the timely and equitable distribution of the funds to the students. This fiscal year, we distributed three hundred and ninety-nine million to over two hundred and seventy-five thousand students across the university from the latest round of federal stimulus funds. Students received an average award of one thousand four hundred and fifty. Since the pandemic began, CUNY has dispersed six hundred and thirty-six million in federal emergency grants to students. We also distributed a new round of awards from the Chancellor's Emergency Relief Fund, totally 2.9 million, this time supporting three thousand three hundred and thirty-five student parents who are taking classes this summer. I was touched to receive many messages from the recipients who shared their gratitude and even told stories about they hope to pay it forward, including one student parent who hopes to open a nonprofit and support autistic children. Today, we have dispersed nine point four million to students throughout the Chancellor's Emergency Fund. I'm also happy to report again that the efficiencies for reinvestment and innovation initiatives, known as ERI, continues to produce reduction in cost. We estimate that annual savings have reached thirteen point seven million. Several projects are ramping up now, however, and we expect that the total annual savings will increase over the course of the next fiscal year. Today, we have implemented improvements in the following areas: automation of student withdrawals, centralization of clearinghouse reporting, automated class scheduler, electronic transcripts, automation of Excel sheet verification, automation of graduation audit, and FAFSA verification systems. We anticipate additional savings over the forthcoming fiscal year from the implementation of the following initiatives: telecom services, class and event management, student information system for adult and continuing education, and e-marketplace, which we have named CUNY Buy. I look forward to reporting to the board on the progress of these initiatives. Turning now to something that I hope you've all seen, we have kicked off our renewed marketing push with several high-visibility campaigns currently underway. We are advertising CUNY's summer offerings across digital platforms, and you might have seen videos on the digital screens of subway cars and on the Link NYC terminals across the city, reaching not only our students, but many other college students who have returned to the city for the season. This is in addition to our broad applied-to-CUNY campaign running on multiple digital platforms and radio. We also have a television spot in Spanish, which is running on Univision and Telemundo, and an English-speaking spot airing on Spectro. Our beloved ASAP program is also running ads both on the subway platforms and on the trains. Overall, this recent effort has led to nearly twenty-four thousand people starting a CUNY application over the past couple of months. And now, for a celebratory speed round of news. At our last meeting, I shared that three of our community colleges were named as semifinalists for the 2023 Aspen Prize, the nation's highest recognition for community colleges, which comes with an award of one million dollars. The ten finalists have since been announced, including our very own Ostos and Kingsborough Community Colleges. We look forward to hopefully congratulating one of you two as the winner next spring. In recognition of the tenth anniversary of President Obama's establishment of DACA on June 15th, I joined Donald Graham, co-founder of the Dream.us, in an op-ed calling for Congress to keep working on a permanent path to U.S. initiative for U.S. dreamers. President Obama himself marked the occasion by reflecting on the program with five dreamers, and we were so proud to see two Hunter College alumni included among them, Davashish Basnet, a more recent Rhodes Scholar, who had just attended his commencement the week prior, and Jessica Astudillo, a Macaulay graduate who's been on the frontiers as a doctor here in New York City. I also joined Mayor Adams and President Vincent Boudreaux at City College to announce an exciting new video game design program with a two-million investment from the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment as part of a push to make our city a hub for the video game industry. This would also be a pipeline for students who graduate from a similar associate degree program at Ostos Community College. Two-time CUNY alum Demond Mullins led the first all-black American expedition to successfully summit Mount Everest, truly bringing our university to new heights. Two weeks ago, I joined Bar College President Leon Botstein and DEO Chancellor David Banks at LaGuardia to celebrate the twentieth anniversary of early college high schools in New York City. As you might be aware, CUNY has twenty of the standout high schools serving more than ten thousand DOE students across the five boroughs each year. We've seen just how well early college high schools have worked over the past two decades. We're graduates of these schools more likely to earn a college degree than their peers and able to earn their degrees more quickly. I had the delight of spending two Sundays this month walking with our CUNY community, once at the National Puerto Rican Day Parade, where I also helped kick off the walk with Governor Hochul, and again yesterday for the NYC Pride Parade. It was a wonderful celebration to see everybody come out in celebration of the LGBTQI+ community. The parade was also a pointed reminder of the work which remains to be done. At CUNY, we have been proactive in supporting our LGBTQI+ students with a wide array of support programs specially tailored to provide them with career engagement opportunities and to help them developing leadership skills. Hopefully, everybody's getting ready to vote tomorrow if you didn't do it early. I am excited that CUNY is once again playing a role in helping New Yorkers fulfill their civic duty. We have ten campuses hosting early voting sites, and we have six tomorrow hosting primary day voting. I'd like to acknowledge that this will be the last board meeting for interim deans Vanessa Valdez at the Macaulay Honors College and Eduardo Capalong at the CUNY Law School. They provided valuable leadership during difficult times. We thank them for the dedicated service to CUNY and wish them well as they return to their faculty life. I'd also like to acknowledge our interim Vice Chancellor and CIO Anne Roast for her work, and thank her for coming out of retirement to help us at a critical time in the university's history. This, Mr. Chair, concludes my final report for the academic year, and I wish the board and everybody with us today a safe and enjoyable summer, and look forward to meeting again with all of you in the fall.
And a great and happy and healthy summer to you two, Chancellor. Thank you for your comments. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that board members are participating remotely, and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask the members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be, will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid kind of speaking over each other. For clarity and coordination, I'll ask the secretary to read all of the items. Gail?
And I just want to note, Robert Mojica, I mark present for voting purposes, he's, has joined us. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of May 16th, 2022.
Yeah, I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Burger, second.
Okay. So any discussion on this item? We'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number two is the Committee on Audit. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the FY 2023 internal audit plan. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2023 internal audit plan based on the recommendation from the Audit Committee.
I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Second, Kim.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 2B is a resolution to approve the FY 2023, sorry, 2022 External Audit Plan. The university is requesting that the Board of Trustees approve the External Audit Firm's Annual Audit Plan, which includes the scope approach and timing of their fiscal year 2022 financial statement and federal audits based on the recommendation from the Audit Committee.
Like to move this item, may I have a second?
Second, Kim.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number three is the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item 3A is a resolution to authorize the procurement of Cisco software and hardware from Coronet for upgraded network performance to support high-flex classroom upgrades at Lehman College. As part of Lehman College's Network Digital High-Flex Classroom Initiative, Lehman College will undergo an upgrade to their computer network infrastructure platform and switching environment to support the bandwidth, resiliency, and security requirements of Lehman's upgrade of one hundred and seventy-six high-flex classrooms, lecture halls, and meeting rooms. Lehman College has selected Coronet, an MWBE vendor, to provide the resources required for this project. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize Lehman College to procure Cisco hardware and software from Coronet at an estimated cost not to exceed one million eight hundred and six thousand and seventeen dollars.
All right, I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Burger, seconds.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to authorize the renewal of the university enterprise license for Adobe Creative Cloud and Document Cloud software. Adobe products, including Adobe Creative Cloud, is utilized by three, thirty-one thousand six hundred and three faculty and staff. The university also has twenty-seven thousand student licenses and utilizes Adobe products on shared device licenses for labs and classrooms. The current Enterprise Term License Agreement for Adobe is set to expire in August 2022. The university has selected Dell Marketing to enter into a new three-year agreement, which maintains the terms of the current agreement and meets the stated requirements conveyed by the campuses. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Dell Marketing to provide Adobe for an amount not to exceed four million three hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars over a period of three years.
I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Burger, seconds.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize a contract with Safety Stratus, Inc. to provide a chemical tracking software solution. As required by the Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Act, as well as other local, state, and federal laws, CUNY is required to properly manage the university's chemical inventory and safety data sheets and ensure their availability and accuracy. The university's current contract is set to expire in October 2022. Following an RFP issued by the university, the university has selected a chemical inventory software management vendor, Safety Stratus, to perform these tracking services. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Safety Stratus, Inc. to provide a chemical tracking software and make expenditures and purchases under said contract for an amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over a period of five years.
Like to move this item, may I have a second?
Burger, seconds.
Any discussion on this item, any questions? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3D is a resolution to authorize the renewal of a contract with CPS HR Consulting to provide continued access to the Exams Express platform to administer civil examinations. The City University of New York, a civil service entity recognized by the state of New York, must comply with the civil service hiring process and requirements. Exam Express, an online civil service examination system portal, was developed and integrated into the university's Human Resources Information Technology Framework and has been maintained by CPS HR Consulting, otherwise known as CPS, after it was selected through a competitive public solicitation process in 2002. The university requires continuous access to Exams Express to maintain civil service exam administration operations, and CPS uniquely possesses a bank of exams that cover the university's wide range of civil service titles that have been customized over the years to meet CUNY's requirements. The university would like to award a single-source contract to CPS for continued maintenance and access to Exams Express. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with CPS HR Consulting for an amount not to exceed one million four hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars over a period of four years.
I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Burger.
I believe Mr. Vivalo has his hand.
Yes. Oh, is that for second Angelo?
Yes, of course.
Thank you so much. Um, any discussion on this item? Any questions? All right, we'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to authorize a contract with Cooling Guard Mechanical Corporation to provide ongoing maintenance and required repairs of HVAC systems. CUNY currently leases office space at eight locations throughout New York City, all of which require maintenance and repairs of the heat, ventilation, and air conditioning HVAC systems. The current contract to provide HVAC services is set to expire in September 2022. Following an invitation for bigs, CUNY has selected Cooling Guard Mechanical Corporation to provide monthly preventative maintenance at the locations and, as needed, repairs on a time and material basis. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Cooling Guard Mechanical Corp. for an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars over a period of two years.
I'd like to move this item, may I have a second?
Arvinides.
All right, any discussion on this item, any questions? We'll now vote, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 3F is a resolution to authorize a contract with Cooling Guard Mechanical Corporation to provide ongoing maintenance and required repairs of HVAC systems. CUNY currently leases office space at, huh? That's my bad. Sorry, let's, 3F looks like it, we've got listed twice, so that's my fault, sorry, Bill.
No problem.
Let me just quickly go to 3F, which is a CUNY, 3F is a resolution to authorize a contract with Complete Books and Media Supplies, Inc. for online and print books and other related services. The total amount of that contract, according to the resolution, is three, so it's exactly, um... It's a little complicated, but it's essentially a specific agreement of three million dollars. it's a little complicated, but it's essentially a specific agreement of three million dollars per year for an amount not to exceed eleven million, five hundred thousand dollars over the term of the agreement, and for an amount not to exceed fifteen million for the five-year renewal of the agreement. And this is being done through an ENI consortium contract.
Okay. Like to move that item. May I have a second for it?
For seconds.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item three G is a resolution to authorize a contract with Safe and Sound Armored Courier for armored car services. The university requires armored vehicles and armored courier services to transport cash from college bursar offices to their depository institution. University current contract for armored car services will expire in August, two thousand and twenty-two. Following an RFP, the university has selected Safe and Sound Armored Car Services to provide these services. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Safe and Sound Armored Car Services, Inc. with a cost not to exceed one million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, nine, nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty-five cents over a period of five years.
I'd like to move that item. May I have a second?
For seconds.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item three H is a resolution to revise the tuition schedule for spring, two thousand and twenty-three to include a non-resident online degree program tuition category and an online infrastructure fee for all fully online programs at the City University. In order to standardize tuition and fee rates for students across the university, university is proposing a revision to the schedule of tuition for fully online degree programs for non-resident students effective spring, two thousand and twenty-three. At one point, two times the resident tuition rates for online undergraduate and graduate degree programs at the university's senior colleges and graduate and professional schools. The university is also requesting that the Board of Trustees extend the online infrastructure fee of seventy-five dollars per semester to all fully online degree programs at the university beginning for the spring, two thousand and twenty-three semester.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second?
For seconds.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item three I is a resolution to authorize an academic excellence fee for Baruch College's online Masters in Business Administration degree program. Baruch College is planning to offer an online MBA program starting spring, two thousand and twenty-three. In order to ensure the same quality is delivered to students enrolled in the online MBA as those enrolled in the traditional MBA program, and in order to generate sufficient revenue to cover online operating costs, Baruch College is requesting an academic excellence fee. Baruch College is requesting the Board of Trustees' approval to adopt an online MBA program academic excellence fee of a hundred and twenty dollars per semester, beginning in the spring, two thousand and twenty-three semester.
All right, I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, Nina Garcia.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item three J is a resolution to approve the FY two thousand and twenty-three operating and capital allocations. The university is requesting the Board of Trustees to adopt the appropriated operating budget allocations by campus and program for the fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-three, beginning July one, two thousand and twenty-two, for a total amount of four million, four point one two billion dollars and the thirty-eight million dollar American Rescue Plan Act Minority Serving Institutions Allocation Plan. The university is also requesting that the Board of Trustees adopt the capital budget allocation for projects authorized by the City University Construction Fund to address critical maintenance, infrastructure, and programmatic initiatives in support of the university's mission.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move this item, but with an amendment. I move to approve the allocations with the exception of the Central Office System allocations. The first resolved paragraph would add, and quote, "with the exception of the Central Office System allocations," at the end of the paragraph. The allocations for the Central Office will be further reviewed by the Board, discussed with the Chancellery, and then brought back to the Board for approval. And let me thank COO Batista, uh, in working through this. So I'd like to really express my appreciation to him. May I have a second for the resolution as amended?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now move, we'll now move to vote. Uh, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number four is the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research Activities. Item four A is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in computer science leading to the Bachelor of Science degree at Baruch College. Baruch College is currently the only senior college of CUNY without a computer science major. Excuse me, the proposed computer science program will serve the City University of New York's mission to prepare its diverse population of students for their future of work and a wide variety of possible professions, where computer science skills are increasingly in demand by allowing them to develop the necessary skills for academic and professional advancement in this rapidly growing field.
I'd like to move the item. Do I have a second?
Second, O'Donnell Tormi.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four B is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in health sciences leading to the Associate of Science degree at Queensborough Community College. The proposed health sciences program will fulfill the college's goal to expand its healthcare offerings, match well-prepared career entrance with healthcare, healthcare employment opportunities, and build the healthcare high, high school to career pipeline. The program will also serve Central and South Brooklyn and other communities in New York City to meet the community health demands and disparities.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, O'Donnell Tormi.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four C is a resolution regarding the establishment of pro, of program in cybersecurity leading to the Associate of Applied Sciences degree at Queensborough Community College. The proposed cybersecurity program will provide numerous job opportunities and career paths for students and is designed to address the demand for qualified computer and data security skills that is growing in the private and government sectors nationwide. The intent of the program is aligned with the long history of technology programs and with career pathways and equity efforts at the college.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, the item Angelo.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four D is a resolution regarding the establishment of a program in mathematics leading to the Associate in Science degree at Queensborough Community College. The proposed mathematics program will prepare students for transfer to a senior college in a baccalaureate program majoring in mathematics, mathematics education, data science, applied mathematics, statistics, or another related STEM field. The intent of the program is aligned with the college's strategic planning priorities of offering students clear career pathways and addressing disparities and equity. Opportunities for careers in this field are numerous, jobs in this field pay well, and have demonstrated high job satisfaction.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, the item.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four E is a resolution regarding the establishment of Centro de las Americas at LaGuardia Community College. There's a high demand for Centro de las Americas to be established as a single campus-based center at LaGuardia Community College. The case has been made for an entity at the college that both supports and celebrates its Latin students while also serving as a cultural and intellectual hub in Western Queens, celebrates the rich and varied traditions and history of the people of Latin heritage.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
For second.
Okay. Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four F is a resolution to amend and replace the City University of New York's academic integrity policy. The proposed revised policy will respond to emerging technologies, excuse me, that have widened the pool of opportunities for cheating and clarify which uses constitute cheating, plagiarism, and violations of academic integrity. The revisions were drafted, reviewed, and vetted by a faculty subcommittee of the Committee on Academic Technology and presented to the Executive Vice Chancellor's Academic Policy Committee for review and revision. Before final approval, the document was reviewed for input and comment by the university's Student Senate, representatives from the university Faculty Senate, the Council of Chief Academic Officers, and the Vice Presidents of Enrollment Management and Student Affairs. In addition to revising and clarifying some outdated language, the proposed changes include, um, the add the unauthorized contribution of a student's har, uh, work to third-party vendors such as commercial homework aggregators, and expand the definition of plagiarism to the unauthorized use of said vendors. Broaden the type of, the types of electronic devices not permitted to be used during examinations. Include the falsification of medical documents to either gain unauthorized access to campuses or to obtain an excused absence, misexamination, or assignment. Engage department chairs in the reporting process, provide additional guidance on promoting and distributing the academic integrity policy. Commit, uh, and to commence a campus tracking system of reported cases.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
For Zani, second.
Um, any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four G is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRA Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. Introduced in October, two thousand and nineteen, the CAPRA Dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, O'Donnell Tormi.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on this item? Any questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number five is the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Item number five A is a resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration report. There are actions entered at the campus level into the CUNY system of record between March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two and May six, two thousand and twenty-two. The report contains a total of one hundred and fifty-five actions, including sixty-two fellowship leaves, forty appointments and reappointments with tenure, and thirty-three executive compensation plan interim and regular appointments.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Last year's second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five B is a resolution to appoint Livia Kengemi as Vice President for Finance, Human Resources, and Business Development at Hunter College. Livia Kengemi has been serving as Assistant Vice President of Planning and Budget since April, two thousand and eighteen, and has been managing the college's financial health, planning, and business operations. Ms. Kengemi has played a pivotal role during her eighteen years of service at Hunter overseeing a variety of business operations, including serving as the Security Administrator on all bank accounts, the preparation and analysis of financial statements, nine ninety tax returns, and other financial reports as required by the university's Controller's Office, and managing the budgetary activities of facilities and capital projects of the college. Ms. Kengemi holds a BA in Accounting from Hunter College and is a certified public accountant. Pending approval by the Board of Trustees, today, this appointment will be effective May sixth at a salary of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. The president highly recommends this appointment.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second? Thank you, Angelo. Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Yes, I'm sorry, Henry, go ahead.
The explanation says Ms. Kengemi will oversee the indirect spending of the Research Foundation budget. Is that the CUNY Research Foundation or the Hunter College Research Foundation?
Chancellor?
If that's at Hunter, I assume they're talking about the Hunter College one. Because
They have a research foundation that's separate?
The, it's, it's, is the, is the, the research office grants that deal with Hunter. So it's the office that connects with the RF from Hunter.
Mm-hmm. And oversees grants going to Hunter.
Can we assure that that is true? Because if it's not, if it's the CUNY Research Foundation, I have some, I have issues with that.
I don't, I don't think it's, 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 it's the CUNY Research Foundation. I, I wouldn't, that wouldn't be coming up. So we'll double check.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move this on a conditional basis then. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose, and I will add the caveat. If this is for the larger RF, that this would come back. Uh, even though if, uh, a resolution pertaining to the RF wouldn't come before us on this, but I will just say that it will come back if it is not. I mean, if, or if it is tied to the Research Foundation itself. So please don't respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five C is a resolution to appoint Antonak Coleman as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at Megar Evers College. Dr. Antonak Coleman is currently serving as the Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs in the Office of Academic and Student Affairs at the University System of Maryland. And was previously the Assistant Vice President of Academic Affairs and Professor at Morgan State University in the HBCU and Maryland's Preeminent Public Urban Research University. Dr. Coleman holds both a PhD in Administration Policy and Research and MA of Social Work and Clinical Social Work from the School of Soc, Social Work at the University of Maryland Baltimore and a BA in Sociology from the University of Maryland Eastern Shore. Section six point two B of the Bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that a distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of Associate Professor or the title of Professor who had tenure in another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the Board in its discretion. Pending approval by the Board of Trustees, this appointment as Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs will be effective August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at a salary of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. Dr. Coleman will also be appointed as a full professor of social work with tenure at Megar Evers College effective August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and placed on leave while she serves as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs. The president highly recommends this appointment.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second? Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five D is a resolution to amend the Queens College Academic Senate, Senate Charter to add one member of the non-teaching instructional staff to search and review committees for deans, the provost, and chief librarian. Members of the Administration of Queens College petitioned the Academic Senate to add a member of the non-teaching instructional staff to college search and review committees for deans, the provost, and chief librarian. And the Queens College Academic Senate voted unanimously to recommend this change. Queens College President Frank Liu supports the changes to the Charter of the Academic Senate. If approved, this resolution shall be effective today, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
But, but I'll see you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five B is a resolution to amend the Queens College Academic Senate Charter to change divisions to schools. At the beginning of the, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two academic year, Queens College President Frank Liu requests it that the Senate amend the college governance plan, the Senate Charter, to finalize the name change in the current academic departments, other units, and programs from divisions to schools. The Academic Senate unanimously voted to recommend said changes. If approved, this resolution resolves that the proposed amendment to the Charter of the Queens College Academic Senate, changing the name of academic departments, other units, and programs from divisions to schools, is effective June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, Kim.
All right, any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Items five F through five I are resolutions to award early tenure with an application of Bylaw six point two C two effective September first, two thousand and twenty-two to the following individuals. Catherine Pace Miles of Brooklyn College, Christopher Low, Per Christopher Lo Perena at the Graduate Center, Karen Flores at the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy and Gotta Solomon at the Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
For a second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these items? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. These these items are approved.
Item five J is a resolution to appoint Marcia Edwards with tenure at Gutman Community College with a waiver of bylaw six point two point B.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
For a second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five K is a resolution to name the Louise Tama Endowed Scholarship at Hunter College.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five L is a resolution to name the Helen Zia Assistant Director of the Asian American Study Center at Hunter College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second, Kim.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item five M is a resolution to name the Jackson and Muriel alum computer nursing lab at can- at Queensborough Community College.
Like to move the item. May I have a second?
Second, O'Donnell, for me.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number six is the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item number six A is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to contract for Archibas upgrades and enhancements in an out an amount not to exceed one million four hundred thousand dollars. Archibas is a leading provider of real estate, infrastructure and facilities management software that supports many central office initiatives. The proposed upgrade will consolidate the system from six servers onto a single server, which will eliminate the need for redundant licenses and dramatically simplify system maintenance.
All right, I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Angela. Uh, any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item six B is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute new requirements contracts for legal services related to university capital projects. The university requested that CUCF issue a new request for qualifications to solicit and award the CUCF twenty twenty-two legal services requirements contracts to support the university's and CUCF's plan to manage more university capital projects through CUCF, the university's real estate projects and an ongoing governance and management issues on an expedited as-needed basis to support the university's goal to expand, improve and renovate all university facilities. The university requested CUCF provide funding for task orders in an amount up to a million dollars for each of the CUCF twenty twenty-two legal services requirement contracts.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Urbanity's second.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item six C is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute requirement contracts for real estate broker services for CUNY-owned facilities. Uh, Facilities has requested that CUCF issue a new request for qualifications to solicit and award the CUCF twenty twenty-two real estate CUNY-owned broker services requirements contracts solicitation to support the university and CUCF's efforts to dispose of certain university real estate lease, certain university real estate and enter into public-private partnerships in connection with university real estate on an as-needed basis. The university requests that CUCF provide funding for task orders in an amount up to five million dollars for each of the CUCF twenty twenty-two real estate CUNY-owned broker services requirements contracts.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Urbanity's second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? And the only thing I will mention as we move forward, it would be good if we again, consider MWBE firms as well as diversity in this. So that's the only point I'd like to make. Any other comments on this or discussion? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item sixty is a resolution to request the City University Construction Fund to execute new requirements contracts for construction services related to university capital projects. Facilities requested that CUCF issue a contractor requirements contract solicitation to solicit and award the CUCF twenty twenty-two contractor requirements contracts to provide for the ability to engage firms to provide construction services in these trades in order to enhance the university's ability to effectively and efficiently deliver capital projects on an expedited as-needed basis to support the university's goal to expand, improve and renovate university facilities. University requests that CUCF provide funding for task orders in an aggregate amount not to exceed the indicated amounts for each of the CUCF twenty twenty-two contractor requirement contracts.
Okay, I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Burger second.
Thank you. Uh, again, on this item as on the last one, this is something or that as we look at the outcomes of these contracts, we're gonna pay attention and monitor uh MWBE participation in these. Um, any other discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item sixty is a resolution to authorize upgrades for the North Academic Center chilled water system at the City College of New York. The North Academic Center chilled water system upgrades will replace and modify existing condenser, water piping and related valves to resolve cooling tower flow imbalances. The existing fifteen cooling towers will be refurbished in their entirety as outlined in the resolution man and be managed by DASNY. The design was completed in October twenty twenty-one. Construction is anticipated to commence in June of twenty twenty-two and be substantially completed by May twenty twenty-four. University requests CUCF to provide capital funding for the upgrades in an amount of up to twenty-five million one hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Our veneti's second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item six F is a resolution to authorize phase two of the Central Chiller upgrades at Queens College. This project is the second of three phases of the Central Chiller Plant Project that will provide chilled water for air conditioning to buildings on the campus, eliminating the need for multiple chillers at each individual building. The scope of work in this phase will provide and install four chillers, cooling towers, pumps and other requirements managed by DASNY. The design was completed in January twenty twenty-two. Construction is anticipated to commence in July of twenty twenty-two and be substantially completed by May of twenty twenty-four. University requests CUCF to provide capital funding for the upgrades in an amount up to thirty-nine million one hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Burger second.
Thank you, Henry. Uh, any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item six G is a resolution to authorize renovations of the Marshack Hall Plaza and roof at the City College of New York. Marshack Hall consists of a large podium base containing athletic facilities and a thirteen-story tower which houses City College's science departments. The large-scale roof of the podium base is currently unused and severely compromised, causing water filtration to several areas within the athletic facilities. The proposed project managed by DASNY will completely replace and upgrade the existing roof as described in the resolution. The design for the plaza renovations was completed in July twenty twenty-one. Construction is anticipated to commence in July twenty twenty-two and be substantially completed by August twenty twenty-five. University requests CUCF to provide capital funding in an amount of up to forty-one million nine hundred and sixty thousand three hundred dollars.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Burger second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item seven is the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Item seven A is a resolution to adopt an interim protocol allowing student athletes to receive compensation from third parties for their name, image and likeness.
Like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item eight is the Committee on Governance. Item eight A is a resolution to amend Article three of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees to establish new committees of the Board of Trustees.
I'd like to move this item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. The chancellor has asked the board to consider
three.
Or three additional resolutions. I'll ask the secretary to read each resolution for the record and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, please read the resos.
So the first one will be added is item number nine, resolution to appoint UCBO Formoso as Vice Chancellor for Information Technology and University Chief Information Officer at the City University of New York. The reso reads as follows, whereas since twenty fifteen, UCBO Formoso has served as the Chief Information Officer, CIO, with the New York City Department of Finance, the DOF, where he was responsible for overseeing the department's information technology systems and cybersecurity, excuse me, while providing solutions that met the agency's objectives, including the collection of nearly forty-five billion dollars of annual revenue for the city of New York, as well as administering tax exemption and tax abatement programs that provided four billion dollars annually in tax relief to property owners and renters. And whereas a CIO of the DOF, Mr. Formosa led the implementation of new New York City property tax and business tax systems, which enabled the collection of an estimated forty billion dollars in New York City taxes and launched the DOF Mobile Parking Summon's adjudication application. But excuse me, and whereas he also led the DOF customer relationship and case management system implementation, as well as the implementation of optical character recognition for New York City property deeds and land records and put in place a cybersecurity program. And whereas Mr. Formosa also served as the Acting Commissioner for the New York City Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications in twenty nineteen. Whereas where as Mr. Formosa was previously employed at IBM Global Services, where he managed multimillion-dollar IT services contracts for firms such as Conica Business Systems, Pepsi-Cola, Philip Morris, Diageo, Terminix True Green and PHH Corporation, including application development and maintenance network, mobility services, server and storage support and end-user services, IT security programs and complex IT transformations. And whereas Mr. Formosa holds an MS in computer science from Pace University, now therefore be it resolved that UCBO Formoso be appointed as Vice Chancellor for Information Technology in University Chief Information Officer at the City University of New York effective June twenty-seventh twenty twenty-two at a salary of three hundred thousand dollars per year. The explanation is as follows, as a member of the Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Senior Leadership Team, UCBO Formoso will play a key role in planning, developing and executing IT strategic plans and will provide direction and leadership to universities' technical teams charged with designing, developing and supporting the university's vast enterprise technologies, including applications, data centers, networks and systems, CUNY cloud services, IT security and technology strategy. The Vice Chancellor serves as a member of the Chancellor's Cabinet, co-chairs the IT Steering Committee and oversees over one hundred and seventy-five centralized staff. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
For a second.
That item is added. I now present item number nine. May I have a second?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item? Chancellor, any comments? None? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
I abstain. Salimat.
I'm I'm sorry?
I abstain.
Okay.
Salimat.
Okay, thank you. Any others who wish to abstain or oppose? All right, that item is approved with one exception.
I I just wanted to thank the members of the search committee who helped in that in that process. A a great candidate with uh both private sector and New York City uh government experience, so we're delighted to have him on board. And I hope that the folks who heard that he was instrumental in getting the parking summon system up to speed. Uh, the people who have tickets in our campuses do not run away for cover, so we're very excited to have him on board.
Um, thank you, Chancellor. Um, item number ten, Gail?
Item ten is a resolution to appoint Graciela Michikovsky as Dean of the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism at the City University of New York. Whereas Graciela Michikovsky has been the Executive Director for the Center for Community Media, CMM, at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism since twenty nineteen, where she led the expansion of CMM from a New York-centric organization into a national network that provides sustainability resources to news outlets serving communities of color and immigrants. And whereas Ms. Michikovsky also launched a national black media initiative and an ad boost initiative that connected community media in New York City with more than twenty-five million dollars in local government advertising funds. And whereas Ms. Michikovsky is the founding director of the Latino Media Initiative, LMI, at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism, which produces original research on the Latino media sector, offering training and leadership support and hosts an annual Latino Media Summit. And whereas from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, Ms. Michikovsky was the founding director of the bilingual journalism program at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism, the the nation's first bilingual master's program, training bilingual reporters with a focus on covering Latino communities. And whereas Ms. Michikovsky's holds an MS in journalism from the Columbia University Graduate School of Journalism and a BA in journalism and communications from the Universidad de la Salvador. And whereas the university engaged in a nationwide search conducted by Whit Kiefer and chaired by trustee Ken Sunshine and recommended Ms. Michikovsky as one of the finalists for the position of Dean of the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism. And whereas section six point C two, six point two C two of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that, quote, "A person appointed to the title of professor, associate professor or assistant professor may be granted early tenure by the board in its discretion under these bylaws after not less than one nor more than seven years of continuous satisfactory service on an annual salary basis when such service is interrupted by the period of a fellowship deemed by the college valuable to it when for a very substantial reason, the college would be well-served by such early grant of tenure or when the person has had tenure in another accredited institution of."
The word caused me to get.
Now therefore be it resolved that Graciela Michikovsky be appointed as Dean of the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism at the City University of New York effective August first twenty twenty-two at a salary of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year. And be it further resolved that Graciela Michikovsky will be appointed to the position of Professor of Journalism at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism and placed on leave during her term as dean and will not receive additional salary nor have any teaching or other faculty responsibilities. And be it further resolved that Graciela Michikovsky be it will be awarded tenure at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism effective August first twenty twenty-two with an application of bylaw six point two C two. The explanation is as follows, Ms. Michikovsky is a contributor to The New Yorker, The California Sunday Magazine, The Atlantic, The Paris Review, The Jewish Daily Forward, El País in Spain, Piayu in Brazil, Letras Libres in Mexico, Soho in Colombia, Etiqueta Negra in Peru, The Clinic in Chile, Internazionale in Italy and the Index of Censorship in the UK. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
I make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to add item number ten to our agenda. May I have a second?
Beautiful. Second.
Okay, thank you. That item has been added. I will now present item number ten. May I have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Here, uh, again, we are excited with this uh with this candidate. Here, uh, again, we are excited with this, uh, with this candidate. We have a great international journalist. Uh, with a great track record and an author. Uh, also a member of the Newmark School of Journalism community, so she knows the the community, she knows New York City. And um, so we're very excited about uh, her capacity to continue. The innovation, she's been part of the team that's created many innovative programs there at the school. Uh, good track record with fundraising, which is very, very important. Uh, so we're very, very excited. My appreciation goes to the members of the Search Committee. And also to the outgoing dean, her butler, for having done a great, great job.
All right, thank you, Chancellor. Any other discussion on this item?
I was. I would like to add that, um, I'm really excited about this, this uh. Appointment because. It again illustrates the strength of the CUNY leadership. And that CUNY leadership uh can emerge and become um and reach the highest levels of CUNY. So it just follows in that tradition, very much the way the Chancellor's appointment. Voted that tradition or started that tradition. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you, trustee Cortez Vasquez. Any other comments, discussion? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
So this is the third and last item to be added as item number eleven. Item eleven is a resolution to appoint Dara Byrne as dean of the McCully Honors College at the City University of New York. Whereas Dara Byrne has been the Associate Provost for undergraduate retention and dean of undergraduate studies at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. Since two thousand and sixteen, and where she was, has raised funds to develop and launch new initiatives such as the LEAP. CUSP, John Jay ACE Seed Stem Accelerator. Humanities Transfer Pipeline and the Justice Capital Initiative. And whereas Dr. Byrne also led the implementation of machine learning and predictive analytic tools that boosted graduation rates. By six percent in one year, increased one-year retention by three percent and four-year graduation rates by sixteen percent in five years. Launched five new dual-degree AA to BA and BA to MA programs and led. The development of the college's anti-racism and student success vision plans. And whereas Dr. Byrne was previously the director of McCully Honors College at John Jay. Where she launched McCully's honor, McCully Honors College at John Jay College within one year. Created the college's outreach and recruitment strategy, exceeded recruitment and enrollment targets each year and realigned the budget to increase staffing. And advisement capacity. And whereas Dr. Byrne has been. An associate professor in the Department of Communications and Theater Arts at John Jay since two thousand and nine. Teaching in the areas of first-year experience, civic engagement, media studies, persuasion, digital media, honors colloquium. And cyber, cybersecurity, virtual internship. And whereas Dr. Byrne holds a PhD in rhetoric. And intercultural communication from Howard University. An MA in English from Carleton University and a BA in sociology and English combined from Carleton University. And whereas the university engaged in a nationwide search conducted by Isaacson Miller and chaired by the Board of Trustees Vice Chairperson, Sondra Wilken. And recommended Dr. Byrne as one of the finalists for the position of dean of the McCully Honors College. Now therefore be resolved. That Dara Byrne be appointed as dean at the McCully Honors College at the University, the City University of New York, effective August first. Two thousand and twenty-two at a salary of two hundred and forty thousand dollars per year. And be it further resolved that Dara Byrne shall be appointed to the position of professor of communications and theater arts at John Jay College. And placed on leave during her term as dean and will not receive additional salary. Nor have any teaching or other faculty responsibilities. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment.
All right, I'd make, I'd like to make a motion to add item number eleven to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
All right, that item has been added. I now present item eleven. May I have a second for that?
Second, people.
Thank you. So any discussion on this item? Any comments?
I would. Sure. Yeah, I would just like to take the privilege again. Of of saying that this is another stellar example of CUNY. To have having such excellent leadership. Within our universities to the extent that we could. Uh, enhance. CUNY's experience by elevating them to a dean's and president positions. So it's another example of CUNY growing the best within CUNY.
Thank you. Salamatu, did you have a question or is that from before?
This is from before.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would like to amend my vote to the other uh resolution if possible after this.
Oh, sure. Um, not a problem. Um, any other comments, discussion on this item? All right, um, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Uh, back to your question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
She wants to reopen the voting record.
No, understand.
So we have to understand which item and it's not necessarily, you have to have a motion to be able to reopen a vote.
Okay, then is this.
Simple.
It's all right, is this pertaining to the vote that you that you abstained on?
Yes.
All right, let's, I make a motion that we go back and reopen, you can.
Item number nine.
Fine, that we reopen item number nine. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
That's fine. And what would you like to, how would you, and?
So Bill, you should just take the vote over again on item number nine?
Fine. We're reopening item number nine. Uh, it has been moved and seconded. Um. You know, all of those in favor, I do, well, if there is, obviously, if you, if you don't have anything. How would you like to change your vote? Let me just put it that way. I think that's just the easiest thing. Would you like to abstain?
Yes to the motion.
All right, thank you. So that item is approved. With that, um, there being no further business, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
I can, Kim.
Second.
Everybody have a great, happy and a healthy summer. Be safe. Take care, everyone.
Everybody vote.
Exactly, don't forget to vote.
Yep. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.